All right, good evening, everyone. On March twentieth, my name is Mike Barron calling the Sewing proper school board meeting to order as this is the first meeting of the new board after following the elections on on March eleventh. As this is the first or the board's first meeting, the superintendent typically opens the meeting and we go through the process of electing a chair. Once the board chair is elected, the gavel, if you will, is turned over to the chair to facilitate the rest of the remaining board positions, including the vice chair. So it was a great time to get started and get going again. So I'm looking forward to this, looking forward to the work moving forward. But at this time, I'd like to begin by asking everyone, including our friends who are not with us this evening, Raj and James, making sure you can hear me.
Yes, I asked them if it's inconvenient for them to be in person.
And alone.
And alone, yeah.
I don't, you guys like to. So before we get too far into it, James, it's inconvenient for you to be here this evening and you are alone?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have a company meeting down in Newton, Mass, down here, I'm in an office by myself.
All right, all good. Raj?
Yes, I'm in Florida, I'm in a hotel room by myself.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much. So what we're gonna do is go through the the process of asking for nominations for the chair at Sewing proper school board for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'd like to open it up if anyone likes to nominate somebody.
I'd like to nominate Stephanie Grun to continue on as our chair. Thank you for the nice balance to the that leadership position. You're open to being to work with and I look forward to continuing to deepen the collaborations that we can even with our faculty, administrations, students, community. Now, I think it'd be a really excellent choice to continue that work. You're welcome.
Second?
Are you willing to accept?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Second, you're still good, all right. So we have a second. So Stephanie is nominated, willing, and seconded. Are there any other nominations for for chair of the Sewing proper school district? See. So, that said, what I'd like to do is, yeah, so we have to do a roll call vote. And we'll start with Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Go around and I'll get you guys at the end.
Brian, yes.
Dan, yes.
Peters, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
James?
Stroger, yes.
And Raj?
Gupta, yes.
All right, perfect. Congratulations.
Yeah, cheer for a moment. Don't raise for me, though, so we'll talk about that later.
All right, thank you very much, everybody, I greatly appreciate it. Just open this up. So we need to also nominate a vice chair. Can I take nominations from a vice chair?
I'd like to nominate myself for vice chair, which maybe is a little bit awkward doing that, but I'd like to also tell you why. I've always worked very well with Stephanie. I can bring a unique perspective to to what's going on. I am dedicated to sharing information early and often amongst ourselves and looking forward to press that that opportunity further. I'd like to help her and us by establishing a task list and action item list when statements are made or promises are made or we make commitments in this boardroom that we can add them to our list of the things don't get lost in the weeds that can happen sometimes. That's a really relatively simple tool that we could deploy to minimize that, especially as time goes by. So I think I'm well suited for that role and I would appreciate your support.
Other nominations?
I nominate Jim Manning.
Do you accept the nomination?
Sure.
I'm gonna have a second.
What about the? Is John, is John even second?
Yeah, John would need a second as well.
Yeah.
That's a good point, forgot about that. Is there a second for John?
I'll second John.
Raj, second shot, okay. Is there a second for Jim Manning? I'll second Jim, just to if there was a nomination that's had it. Jim, is there anything you'd like to speak to?
Well, first of all, John and I are thanks, known each other for a long time. Yeah, I mean, I I'll say I'm a really busy person. When I joined the board, I had no intention of being in an executive role. But, you know, if if the board, you know, sees fit that to be nominate me and and sees Steve sees fit to nominate me, I think I can bring a lot of experience to it. I've done the chair position before for several years. I've done the vice chair position before for several years. I know what a school board is and what it needs to be. And I think one of the most important positions that a vice chair brings is to help the chair do their job, which is not an easy job. So yeah, I'll accept the nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Well, in keeping with Mr. Glover, I will nominate myself because I have hardly enjoyed serving as vice chair of this board and given hours and hours and hours of my time to it and fully intended to continue doing that this time around. So if someone wants a second, be fine, and if not, I will gracefully back away. Is there a second for Ms. Peters?
I'll I'll second Ms. Peters.
James, okay. Okay. Are there any others? Are we gonna stick with three?
We have no seconds left.
Okay. So in that aspect, people have had the right to speak and there's been nominations and seconds. So I guess we go around the room and we vote. So I will start with Mr. Glover.
Four of the three, doing that or one for one? How do they do it?
Should go for three?
Both friends.
Three.
Yeah, the three.
So you get to get vote once?
I need to make up.
And because we have two online, we're gonna do a roll call?
Yep.
We were all in person, we could just say raise our hands and count it. But since we're, I've got two online, we gotta do a roll call.
Okay. All right. John, your vote.
Glover, Glover.
Okay. And Jim?
I'm voting for someone.
You're voting for someone.
I wish I knew you wanted to be vice chair.
I thought you did, I'm so sorry.
I did, no. Well, just do it with this Manning.
Ms. Peters, I'll vote for Peters. All right, I'm gonna hold off because I will work with whoever is given to me. So I will come back if I have to break the tie, but. All right.
Raj?
Can I offer a quick commentary before I say my vote? Is that permitted?
Sure.
Yeah, is that okay? Just because I obviously I'm trying to, I want, I'm, I'd be delighted to work with anybody and everybody here and will continue to be aboard. I having seconded John, I'll I'll continue to support John through this as my vote.
Right. And Mr. Stroger? What is your vote? John, Jim, or Christie?
My experience for the the position is torn between two. But I think knowing Mr. Manning's experience with it, if he's still willing to keep his name in the hat, which sounds like he does, I'd say Mr. Manning.
And I am going to respectfully abstain since I will work with whoever is given to me. In that aspect, Mr. Manning has three votes. Mr. Glover has two and Ms. Peters has one. So we will, Mr. Manning will be the new. All right, so then we have secretary.
I think they nominated James Stroger.
Second.
James Stroger, you've been nominated for secretary. Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay, are there, is there anything you want to speak to on that before I ask for a second nomination? Or you don't have to.
No, no, no.
Okay, is there, are there any other nominations for secretary? Being no others, we'll have to do a roll call vote on Mr. Stroger being secretary.
Glover, yes.
Peters, yes.
Manning, yes.
Brian, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Jim, James, sorry, Stroger? Your vote for yourself?
Stroger, yes.
Okay, congratulations, your secretary. Appreciate everyone's kindness and and words and speaking and thoughtfulness on that. Just go back to here. Not into the organization. That's my thought. So I want, yeah, I do want, I think we should do that. So I will come back to the rest of the appointments in a moment, but I want to open up to any public comment. If there's anyone here in the room first. And did we don't have, probably we do have staff. Is there anyone online?
No.
And nobody online, okay. So we will keep public input open and and come back to it at the end of the meeting. So there's the board organization, if you look in your list, there are multiple committees that are listed and we typically go through and appoint people, say who, what what committees they would be interested in serving on. I know we have two people online and I hope you have access to Assembly and you can see the list in there as well. And I think it would probably help Amy if we definitely went through with Manifest and and so we're gonna wait till April when everybody.
So a couple of things with this, if you guys go into, if everyone has access to Assembly, there's a couple of things to help us with this. You see some supporting documents where you'll see a PDF slide deck, a district organization meeting, Steve can put that up there if we want to run through that real quick. In the board notes, you will see kind of a kind of when certain committees meet. And so the you can see from Manifest to Finance Committee to Budget Committee, just to give you an idea of kind of, you know, the the commitments and when typically they've met in the past. A couple of things that we're asking as you consider this with Manifest, we'd like to nominate two, and I'll let Amy speak to that in a second, but maintain the current manifest signers through May until there's a training. And so and with PPC, we'd like to, you know, have two nominations, but there's a meeting next week on the twenty-fifth. We'd like to keep those two people through that meeting as well. That way we can finish up some of the, some old business there. And
Do we want to just review this? Because we have a meeting the first week of April. Do you want to just come and do the appointments at the beginning of April, get that further?
We can absolutely, we can absolutely do that.
Everyone okay for that? Dan want to be in the room hopefully too?
We may not be needing to do that because I'm willing to serve as manifest signer again and and our other manifest signers longer on the board.
Mister, yeah.
We have to appoint somebody anyway.
I have no problem with that.
For continuity purposes, it's probably one of the easiest things now. It used to be the most difficult thing, but today it's just a matter of reviewing invoices and it's yeah, pretty streamlined now.
Yeah. Yes, I I would, whatever you decide to do, I would like to authorize signers.
Right.
And you know, whoever it is, you you already know what to do, so you don't need to come to the training if it's someone who doesn't know and they're not comfortable, then, you know, that's one thing, I guess we would keep, perhaps, you know, Stephanie was filling in for Dan. Or if you're comfortable signing, then that's fine. You can still come to the training if you would like.
And and if I may, so just like last year, everyone's gonna be approved to be a manifest signer in case there's an absence or so forth. So now she's appointing two official people, so that may work, right? So instead of delaying all this assignments until our next meeting and having another item on that agenda, we can resolve that tonight while we have got capacity.
I'm great, I'm good with that. So right now, so that we have manifest, we have two, if Mr. O'Keefe's willing to stay on, I mean, that's one easy one, but are there, is there anyone else who wants to do manifest? Mr. Manning? James or Raj, do you have any interest in that or? Just wanna make sure.
Usually people don't want to do this.
I know, but it's
Yeah, I just, I don't know, yeah.
No, no interest from here.
It's, it seems like Jim has stepped up, so I'll, that that's great, thank you, Jim.
Okay. Thank you, great. So I just want to gain people's feeling on this. Do you want me to continue going on through this? We have two people online for the conversation. Is it easier have everyone in the room in April? Or would you just do it? Just do it? Okay, it's mine. Get that from everyone. I get it done, got it done. Okay, so manifest were goods, so he can finance committee, interest in so he can finance committee.
I I would be interested in that if there's an opportunity.
Raj, yeah. I will also take so we can finance committee if no one minds.
Yeah, if somebody else would like, though, I'm happy to, you know, pick something else.
I think you're it, Raj, you and me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Awesome. SAU budget committee? That one meets just a couple of times to go through the SAU budget with other board members and other community members and yeah, similar and budget committee and budget committee members, so we usually, we do two on those?
So was you, there's three, they'll meet, the budget will be presented in September and the budget committee will meet in September, October, and November, and the public hearing is in November. Right, and it's set up the same way as the school district budget.
Usually you really do ask any questions and whatnot. Yeah. So is there anyone interested in the SAU budget committee? Can do it, because it's not, it's not hard, but
I just need one.
Yeah. I mean, I'm well then, happy to, if no one wants a budget committee. I'll take that one. Policy, so we definitely need you two policy people. Mr. Glover, how's please? Yeah, so you have a big history of and still working on and writing to the graduation one, so I think it's important that he would stay on.
Thank you.
Who else would be interested in policy? Do we need a second person?
And that one meets typically during the day. In the past, since I've been here in the mornings, it's subject to change based on the makeup of the committee, but typically that's has, and we're looking at probably one to to two sessions of some training as we, you know, go through our change in process on how we review policy. So just plan on that.
Yeah, that the problem we run into with so many people working is if not available during today. So I'm not, is there anyone who's has the time, interest, availability? That's kind of our problem, that's, that one's a tough one for us. Is this, there any? Hasn't been. We're gonna have to come back and revisit that, I think. We'll have to keep that open and we'll come back and revisit a second person.
Yeah.
On that one, everyone's okay with that. The Burke School Maintenance Improvement Committee, yeah, that one, yeah, orderly, it's a, it's a quick, quick meeting, it's for any improvements to the Burke School, any projects that need to be looked at, taken on, that's what we do.
And we typically zoom zoom people in.
Yeah, I offer a Zoom lunchtime option for that. We did a lot of heavy work this past year. So there's not, there, there is an updated capital improvements plan that's already been approved, so.
I can continue at Burke School. Okay, thank you, Kristy. PPC, PPC, we do not have a negotiation going on this year. We wrapped up rewriting the policies. But it is always exploring the conversation, keeping that going. So that one does meet after school, usually three thirty. Anyone interested in that, Kristy, you want to stay on that one? I know you were, I figured who else is interested. Anyone? It's, this year, this coming year will probably be once a quarter or once a month or whatever.
Please, monthly?
Yeah.
I I'm happy to jump in there and if I, if that's okay.
Yeah, it's at three thirty in the afternoon, usually.
Typically Tuesdays.
Yeah.
It fits better with the the PPC members that are employed in South Eagan. And it runs three thirty, typically four thirty, sometimes four forty-five pending. So.
Yep. So Raj, you're interested?
Yep, yeah, and it sounds like right now it's less of a time commitment because of the cycle we're in and then, so I think that seems manageable. And again, if there are other people would rather do it, then I'm happy to defer.
Absolutely. So who's Manning?
I'll do it.
Jim and Raj are shy. All right, Community Council, that one meets after school. Except for the first Monday of the month, which is always in the evening. So is there anyone interested in that one? I've been doing it, but Kristy, are you interested or able? I don't know if you're scheduling or you're not able to anymore, okay. I think I can stay in that one, to keep that going. If anyone else is interested, it's it's nice to have a second person there, partly for learning and partly for backup. So if there's a second person who's interested, let me know. And the Constitution Interpretation Committee.
Yes, please.
Cause yes, because we're in the middle of a project with that one, so I think, yeah, if everyone doesn't mind, since we're in the middle of looking at the Constitution and John's been working with the group. I'd like to finish that project out. Everyone's okay with that?
Sounds like nice continuity there.
Yeah. Okay. So that takes those. He, okay, so then there's some other, almost I want to say social ones. There's a PTSA liaison and NHSBA. Any interest in the PTSA liaison? I don't know how often they actually meet right now, do you, do you know?
More frequently, I think once a month they're meeting.
They've been doing fantastic.
I know, I was really excited.
Take a moment, thank them for everything they've been stepping up and doing.
Absolutely.
I heard they really, what did I say they raised? They've seen ten thousand dollars in concessions, so this is the first time that they've worked at raising concessions, I want to say thank you very much to everyone working on PTS. And I don't know when they, are they evenings?
I think they've been meeting evenings.
Evenings. We can, is it, I don't know if anyone's interested in that one, we can keep that one open and I can I have to talk to them about that one, type of advice. So I'm gonna come back and leave that one open right now. And we'll come back. NHSBA?
I'll do that.
That's the
tightly connected to the policy.
The fall meeting.
CIP. I hope that you can be the same person. Not as likely as CIP.
Okay.
Recommend that. CIP has to be an Irish person.
Yeah, I know, but so there's two, there's town, Erwin's Board of Selectmen slash CIP, we'd like that to be the same person. So I think that just makes sense that they don't meet as as frequently, right, as they see.
Correct.
And it's like a little inconsistent on when they meet, so we just, we don't need two separate people for that.
And it's more, is it late afternoon then we're meeting?
Or whenever they
Typically, it's a fourth on meeting.
Okay, fourth on, and it's, it just goes through maybe a couple of months.
Yeah, the beginning, right, the fall?
Yep, right. And I believe that Mark Vernon hasn't did CIP as well, so.
Yeah, but that committee's disbanded.
Oh, it has, oh, okay.
Okay. So just to clarify, the town of the Amherst Board of Selectmen Liaison, they would like to have you the same person as CIP. Is what we're, is what the conversation is happening here. So it does need to be an Amherst person for the Amherst Board and the CIP, because the CIP is really just looking at the town of Amherst. So is there anyone interested in liaising with the, with the town of Amherst?
They booted me off their schedule.
We, that one, about it, I mean, that's kind of one that maybe we could rotate people.
So, yeah, and I was gonna
We all can have a little bit of exposure, we could all carry some of the weight every time, the time, and sort it out amongst ourselves.
Yeah, and there's, there's a more I'm gonna be talking with with the board in any way with the role I have unconquered. Because I happen to work on Municipal County Government Committee. So it, I'm naturally wanting to start talking to them more in the planning board and stuff, so we can rotate, I can take it, but I'm more than happy to have a second set of eyes and ears. To work on that. Town of Mark Vernon. Mr. O'Keefe, thank you very much. And then, yeah, I understand that we have a Recreation Department liaison, and I think there's a, it's a non-voting member, is that, are they supposed, it sounds like going to the meetings, it's a non-voting member.
Also has to be an Amherst person.
It does, has to be an Amherst person, but we're still working on the
We're here to talk about that next.
Okay, good. Yeah. So the Amherst, does anyone have, when do they meet? Do you know any Amherst recreation? So the evening, and there's a new director too, so it might be different.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to find out, is it, so anyone interested in Recreation Department liaison? And it's a non-voting member, you go to their meetings to help participate with that conversation almost, apparently. It's something that we've not been doing. And it was reminded of us that we actually should be doing, so that's why it's back on. Not sure who has asked, we, I think we need to find out when the meetings are. Maybe you would help. We can come, we can revisit that one in April, maybe once we find out when the meetings are, okay. Mr. O'Keefe?
The, so we need two people to help with the rec contract negotiations.
That we're still going.
I'd like to do one.
Yeah, because Mr. It wasn't you and Mr. Vigo.
And we got completely reset and we're starting from scratch again.
Right, scratch. So is there anyone that wants to work with Mr. O'Keefe? So we, you definitely want to stay on that, yes. So what are we on?
Just the, what we called last time, right, here. Mission. Contract negotiation.
Yeah, yeah.
Lease.
It's the lease.
It's the lease that the prior board signs.
Yeah.
Negotiating the agreement to use, so he gives some lease.
And they're, yeah, we're going back to revisit what was discussed and we can fill you in, is anyone available or interested? And that one is more of an ad hoc as as you need the, to meet.
Yeah, we started pretty early and we put a lot of effort into it, then it was put on the back burner in November. So now we have to start all over.
Okay.
So it's gonna require probably a couple more meetings now with the same people, or actually different people, because their, their leadership changed.
Yeah.
So starting from scratch there. Meetings amongst yourself, the leadership of our athletic department, facilities department to prepare for that. So probably five or six meetings. Always.
Always, yeah. There, anybody?
You you need a second for that?
It needs to be an Amherst.
Okay, that was my next question, yeah.
Yeah, we need an Amherst one because we wanted balance of the discussion and representative of the school board. I'm sorry?
Fully understand.
Okay, thank you. Anyone? Is there another one we need to visit in April or? All right, Mr. Manning said he'd do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all of them? That's all of them in here? Not having a building and grounds committee going forward?
That's further on the Yeah, it's coming up with the agenda.
So I think that takes care of So I think that takes care of all of them.
And then the open ones will come back to in April.
April, yeah, I think we'll, when we can send everyone an update of, here's the timing of meetings. Here's how often they meet. It kind of gives like a little thoughtfulness. It only has a moment to kind of catch up and breathe.
It's policy, Community Council, PTSA, and Director of our Liaison. There's just a couple of things that you've been, a lot of information has been sent out in the last couple of days. A couple of slide decks with a bunch of links regarding organizing the board and, uh, some policy around that. Some helpful information about how to interact with the SAU. Uh, this evening, there's been a bit of a slide deck that we shared. You see, even there's included an assembly that you can kind of take a look at. I, I, I would, uh, point people to some of the trainings that are happening in April. Uh, I find them, I, I go to the, the, the trainings and they're helpful and they're informative and, and, and you can always get through a webinar or Zoom. Um, so pay attention there. And if anyone has any questions about this, you know, please reach out to Stephanie or, or the office and we'll help people onboard and get organized. So, all right, thank you.
Everything under that. Okay, Community Council update. Oh, yeah, so those who have not met by Gasoline, she's, uh, been our student rep on the board for the year. And just a couple of months left. And you guys, I know you guys were talking about nominations coming up too. It seems so quick.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm, uh. What about me? I'm on council. I'm one of the cabinets in the Nordberg Ski Team. I'm very involved in the music department and the theater department, so I'm very excited to work with, um, more members. Um, so recently, council has passed the Savers of the Month Proposal. Um, this proposal is a student month proposal that I brought, um, to council and it is being rolled out to teachers, um, this past, uh, week and the first Savers of the Month will be named in April. Um, we had an off-campus and free period for sophomores proposal. Um, this was discussed in Boon One. Um, it did not pass. Um, some points were brought up where, um, sophomores were not mature enough to handle off-campus. That each year you go through high school, you learn more. Um, seniority, some like pros for it were that, um, it could help with student time management and self-direction. Um, the past two weeks, council has been working on going through feedback on classrooms. In depth to continue to improve, improve upon the, um, form process and create a great environment for all. We are holding forums next Thursday and Friday, and we'll be sharing the work that council is doing to improve forums. Um, and how we're open to feedback from students. Um, so just like school-wide news, last Wednesday I had the opportunity to go to, um, Getting to Y. Which was a training on how to analyze and find solutions to the data from the YRBS survey. Uh, last Wednesday, students, I saw you can also check the YRBS. Um, so it's very interesting to see that. Uh, the groups that attended will be working on analyzing the twenty twenty-three YRBS data. For Sahegan and creating, um, solutions for the toddlers. Um, I'm an opening night for Sahegan Spring Musical. Sound Music is tomorrow night at seven. Um, be sure to buy your tickets online or on Moulton's or at the door. There are many talented Sahegan students involved in the production as well as, uh, two students from Moulton's. Were playing the youngest font child children. Um, so I myself am involved, um, as well as my little sister. Yeah, I highly recommend everything.
That's great. Um, so I had the opportunity with Community Council to sit in on their meeting when they went through their forum process and they were led by teachers to actually talk about what's successful and in forums and it was a very specific protocol that was followed that was led. I, the first day, I, I wasn't there the first day, but Jenny Dinek led the second day. So the students had the opportunity to interact with the staff and go through a protocol that the teachers actually go through on debriefing and trying to understand, um, the success and the weaknesses and have strengths of different processes. So I thought that was a fantastic exposure for you guys to participate in. It was engaging. I mean, you guys were engaged.
The full meeting time.
Twice. So, um, in all the effort to improve forums and make sure that, uh, the students feel that they're, they're thoughtful, they're fruitful, and they really are meaningful. So. That was great. Awesome.
And for people around there, forum is called when there's a question for the student body to consider.
So forums are held once a month. Um, and most of the time it is, um, like we bring our most recent proposal and we ask for feedback from students. Um, during Fang Fest, we also ask like on Fang Fest themes or like different school activities, um. Yeah, it's primarily to share the work the council is doing and hear student feedback.
And there's been a huge improvement this year, I think, over just the engagement of the students and the staff together. And I, I just wanted to say thank you to Dana for, you know, allowing the students at the beginning of the year to come together as community council as a group and be led in, uh, who was it? Joanna McDeen? Led them through the history and the process and what community council means and what it does. And I've seen a huge improvement this year, just in the participation with thoughtful conversations. So thank you for allowing that to happen.
Uh, also the first day one, just because we mentioned Jenny, who's so great. Day one was Amy Gibbons and Jess Wallace. Yes, so just want to give a shout out.
Yes.
For helping me out. Engaged in the protocol, they just let it facilitate the protocol so the students could. Also, uh, Maya did not share some really good news. She's gonna get super embarrassed, but Maya was recently accepted to St. Paul's for their advanced studies program this summer. Um, so we're super proud of her and very excited.
Well, well done. Kudos to you.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Any other questions for Maya?
Yeah, one question, um. So I know your mom. Question is, uh, so I've been following student councils very long. Are there any proposals that you're going to look at between now and the end of the year that you feel are significant? That we need to know about, like prospectively?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I don't think we have any lined up currently, um, like rolling. Um, but I'm sure before the end of the year we will, um, get those and I'll share them.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Uh, student of the month process, can you talk a little bit about that? Like what it is, how much it works and how students are like?
Yeah, so I have been working really closely with the, um, advisory coordinators, Jenny, Dinek and Moulton. Um, to kind of get this running. So basically I have like, there's a form where teachers can nominate students. Um, there are guidelines on what they're being nominated for. Um, the students of the month who are being nominated are based off of the mission, mission statement and Sahegan Six, like the students embodying that. And then each month, um, while students have saver spotlight, um, advisors have advisory planning time and the first ten minutes of that time are going to be used, um, to select one student from each, uh, grade to be student of the month. And then at the end of the month, it will be, uh, announced and given like a certain.
And are we talking about one student or multiple students? It's possible for?
It's one per grade each month.
Okay, so it should be four each particular. I can just ask our principal to let me know because we have a process up on the L to celebrate those, uh, those kiddos and I'm sure we can do that. Thank you.
Say the sandwich?
The sandwich. The library does this huge, enormous library display for them. Uh, last time they had one of the kids' pictures in a frame with flowers and they wrote it up on the chalkboard. It was, it was gorgeous.
We didn't talk about that being one of the awards, remember? There was a lot of conversation about what do you get when you get? We didn't talk about the sandwich. I think we should. All right. Thank you so much, Maya. Appreciate all your work. Uh, consent agenda. We have two sets of draft minutes, January and February. Is there anything that needs pulled or discussed on there?
I have a question about the school calendar.
We're gonna come to that in a moment. No, I just, I just asked about draft minutes first. Yes. Nothing but, um, the next thing on there is I just want to thank, um, the New Hampshire Humanities Community Project grant for five thousand dollars for ethics forum hype. So appreciate all of our, um, community support on that. And also the school calendar. Is there, uh, Mr. Glover, now you have a question? Or do you want, do you want to discuss?
I'll introduce it. So we've been, uh, presenting some drafts as the, as the year went on. This one is the final draft. But, uh, a point, what we're looking for this evening is to get a motion to approve this as the calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, a good bit of work has gone in to align our calendars at South Eagan. Uh, Barbara School District to both Nashua and, and Milford, um, CTE programs, but then also, uh, Milford, uh, as we partner with them. You know, on trying to align early release days and, and coordinate some transportation in a more easier fashion. Um, I know Steve, you spent some time, you know, partnering a little bit with, with Milford. Uh, any additional? Additional commentary on that?
No, this is, uh, very similar to the one you saw, I think, maybe January thirtieth, if you got exactly. I mean, the only thing, we did change some early release dates. Um, and we also know both Nashua and Milford know, Dana, if, if the SAT date changes, they know. If it's not the window, they know that we may have to move it in the window. That's a slight move. It doesn't really disrupt parents too much and, and both schools understand about, you know, your desire to try and do that and stuff. There's very little changes except some dates to align. Uh, we do meet the statute to a requirement of, of less than ten days of conflict with our CTE centers.
Uh, that was one of them. How does it align with CTE? Because that's also our agenda. Um, and I just wanted to see if this final draft has been, um, distributed amongst the faculty. Uh, in case they had, they had any input. I know that that was something. Yeah, we, we presented it to PPC. They put eyes on it.
And the PD committee is an SAU, so the PD committee looked at all the.
They've been happy with it so far. Sorry.
Uh, question is, um, are we still on the hourly basis or, yeah, I see a hundred and seventy-eight days here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're still hourly, but we did negotiate him to the last event contract add some days. In the next few years, so, yes, hourly by adding days.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Uh, any other discussion? Now we have to do a roll call vote, Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Peter, yes?
Manning, yes.
Ron, yes?
If, yes.
Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Roger, yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, on to reports received. We do have, um, so they're under here. There's, first of all, there's the facility, there's the facility update from Roger, which lists all the information that he's been working on. Um, there's also the discussion, uh, out here about twenty-two members of the, to the South Eagan Building and Grounds Committee. And that's to look at and work with Roger on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. And there's also a member of, uh, memo in here regarding how that Building and Grounds Committee would work with the science.
So what I think, you know, we have, uh, the principal's report. And what I'm hoping, I know Dana, Dana's here this evening, but, um, what we're hoping is take, uh, in our common practice, we take a look at the report and then next time Dana will be back and we'll ask some questions about the principal's report. And she'll give an update in the April meeting. Um, so I don't think we have to you know, kind of dig, dig into the principal's report tonight. Um, I, I wouldn't mind having a conversation about the facilities memo and.
Yeah, that's right right now.
And so, um, I'm gonna speak to. Yeah, I think Steve, as, as he's been working with facilities and, um, in working with the science department in that process, I'll have him kind of walk you through that, some of the highlights of that.
What we'd like to do is reconstitute, um, the full building grounds for South Eagan High School. Uh, with board members, community volunteers, um, in, uh, central office. And then that would oversee all the facilities and also as a, a principal slash superintendent appointed task force to work on the science labs and the science labs would report out to Building and Grounds. Building grounds would report out to the board. The building grounds would facilitate the community events at all, you know, at both Mark Vernon and, uh, the Amherst. We are, uh, ready to, uh, ready to get going. Um, and have, we, we did at the early release, provided some collaboration time for the science teachers to start, uh, looking at it and looking at, there's some best practice designs in New Hampshire um, for science labs and visiting schools and start working as a science lab with Harriman with. Uh, and just start, um, coming up. So we, we'd like to support this structure. Uh, and really think that a fully constituted building grounds meeting regularly, um, would be a, a nice addition, especially as maybe, you know, at some point bringing something to the warrant, having a building grounds committee support is a good thing. And I'm not rushing, I'm not saying next year, but, you know, at some point having a committee look at it in depth and recommended the board and the board using that screening process of committees and, and board members and other experts in the field. We think it's a nice model. It's a model that we try in other districts.
That may, I don't, did I cover that? Does that work?
Yeah.
Can you remind me, what's the deadline for the impact fees? Is that two thousand twenty-six or two thousand?
It's six years.
From the date that it's assigned to us, then, like, do we know how much time's left on that clock?
Um, no.
Okay.
I, if you give me a few minutes, I can.
We talk about the warrant, like that's the piece that we have to make sure that.
Yes.
We extend these funds prior to that, that we're looking at. I don't say rushing the project, but putting it forward in a more fast-paced environment or fast track.
Yeah, and, um, Stephanie did provide updates to the, to the select board about terms of the funds. So I think we're, we're ready to go. I think we're a good place. And we really, Mike, Roger, Amy and I have talked a lot last couple of weeks about trying to engage, reconstitute with the building brands. We did, A- Amy, Roger and I remember meeting and doing some chores to, for the, for a billion rounds. I don't know if that was my interim years. Might have been my interim year.
What's that?
It's your first year.
Yeah, our boards went down. So we'd like to get it back, you know, get the band back together.
Yeah.
Steve. You have two questions. Sorry, can you hear me okay? Yeah, one of, so, uh, I'm reading through this, um, part one and part two, are they equal, um, to each other or is part two subordinate to part one?
Task force recommends to the building grounds. Billion grounds discusses building grounds and then recommends to the board. So, um, it's a work, task force is a work group, worked with Harriman, and we have in the contract three versions.
Yep.
Um, I, I envision the billion grounds really selecting or, or sending it back, but the groundwork by those closest to the labs, the practitioners doing most of the development work. And then the building grounds asking questions going back to like, so, I, I, I don't know if it's subordinate, but yes, one recommends to the other recommends. The developmental level is the task.
Yep, and I didn't mean that as a, uh, 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 like any sort of power hierarchy. The, the reason I was asking is I see this is like you're gonna, don't throw anything at me, um, especially through Zoom. Part one is bold and underlined, and then I saw part two is italicized. So I was just trying to understand what that, like, did that, was that formatting sort of like inadvertent? It's intentional because of this, um, the, 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 the role of the task force relative to part one.
Yeah, but there is no meaningful delineation, um, outlining or highlighting titles. My apologies for the.
No, 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 no. That's what I'm just, that's what I'm just clarifying. Okay, so, so here's, I have a, maybe a little meatier question. Uh, under part two, under the charges is to work with the vendor, uh, or the vendor, however tomato, tomato you would want to print. Do we have somebody selected? Who would select the vendor or it's already been selected?
The, yeah, the architect was selected, um, with the prior board. We went through a process of interviewing three architects. And, um, through that process, selected one with Harriman, and we just recently, we actually signed a contract with them.
We did?
We did. Um, and that's where some of the impact fee work is going to, that, that we're gonna get the impact fees to help pay for all some of this work. Uh, so yes, the, the architects have been selected. They're going to, they, you know, what we want them to do is start working with a group to help say what's, you know, let's look at the school as a whole. Where's the best location of the science? what's, you know, let's look at the school as a whole. Where's the best location of the science labs? Do we wanna just renovate what we have? We want to move everything to the main, main building. What does that look like? Like, and we ask them for three different options. And get the costs on that. So we can say, bring forward, what's the best thing for our students, our programs, and then also our tech peers.
Okay, yep. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Uh, uh, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. It's your story.
I can't see it.
Yeah.
This um committee, does it also get washed through budget committee? Well, we've, the, this committee kind of gets packaged together. Here's a recommendation and then it goes to budget to get washed through before it goes to potential warrant. Especially the, like the science lab.
Yeah, that, that would have to come all the way through our board, us. So the Building and Grounds Committee would, so basically the, it looks like a science lab task force would work together to help come up with designs. They would present to the Building and Grounds Committee. And the Browning and Grounds Committee would bring things to the full board as a discussion and options. And the full board would be the ones that make the, that makes the final decision.
And then that would go to the facility subcommittee as part of the facility. There's a subcommittee for that as well. The budget processing.
So, yeah.
Then it gets washed through our normal budgetary process and fiscal review, committee.
Right. So the, so it would eventually go look, be looked at by the Sovietian Finance Committee. Once we have an actual project put together to present for a warrant. That makes sense?
It, it does. Thank you for explaining that process.
Yep. Right.
Yeah. Um, so I'm just looking under, I guess a couple of questions. One is, how often is, is this meeting again? The billion grounds, that this, this proposed uh uh building and ground science lab task force.
So building grounds would be at least monthly.
Okay.
And science task force would meet um as often as it took to meet the, you know, the timeline, they would meet a couple of, you know, could there, a couple of times a month.
Okay.
And go back to get some homework, they're gonna visit some schools and they're gonna work with the vendor.
Okay, so two school board members designated from the superintendent.
For the building grounds.
Yeah, Amy, director of facilities, two committee members, no teachers or students.
Um. They would be on the task force. They're on task force actually designed, actually to help it to design the.
Even live itself?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Building grounds was more of a nighttime.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't know. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Don't make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, the sort of the corollary question to um Jim, which is the task force also includes probably community and board representation um that during uh strategic objective being on by being behind that um that why would need, I always was kind of excited serving on this thing to really see and hear firsthand what, what you know, what the science teachers were saying, what the, what the students think and what the architect comes up with.
Yeah, and I.
You're a witness. It seems like one of us should be kind of a, a witness.
Well, I mean, I think that's that the, being part of the, the building and grounds committee, you're going to be presented to uh the different options, the rationale, the reasoning, the thinking um and the the set, the task force is, you know, the, the teachers and the, and the students and the people who are going to be in the building, you know, in the space, working in the space, learning in the space and working out the options for the buildings grounds to consider. And I think you'll see a bit of a more of a partnership at that level. Um, and then from there, you know, go through the, the, the regular process to, you know, school board. That was the thought process with this. Um, and we've kind of wanted two smaller committees. But I'll just be nimble um and it move a little bit quicker, but at the same time have all the right people in the rooms at the right time to, to do that. So that, that was the thought process on it.
Well, yeah, but mission. Um, sorry. Just, I'm keep trying to catch up here. Where is uh like, where's community council in all this? Are you gonna be presenting to community council? Are you gonna be talking to them about this? Are you getting feedback from them? Is the student under membership on the task force? Are they from community council? How does community council, their representatives?
So we were hoping that the, the student would be a science interested student and focused on that, you know, um so they would be, so passion connected to it.
Yeah.
Um, the student certainly could, could also facilitate any conversation with community council as needed or as appropriate. But the thought was that a, a science base, you know, someone's taking a number of science classes, maybe doubled up and had multiple experiences in the facilities would be the priority to serve. And then they can certainly communicate liaison with the community council.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that, I mean, that makes, that makes sense. I guess my question though is, it's less about who the student is. My question more is, given the fact that at least as things, unless things change since I've been here for five years, community council is like a governing body in the school still, right? Should they not be involved in major decisions that I don't see community council in here anywhere?
Now, the, the, the design of the academic space uh was designed to include students um who had, they had the passion for it, but not, it, it was not um it wasn't purposely omitted, but no, the focus was including that group and, and, and if they wanted to or needed to liaison with the community council certainly, but did not see a role for community council in the design with science labs and science passionate student. But that doesn't mean it could be expanded to, but that's working.
Okay. And I would rely on, you know, the, the principal and the, and the teachers and the students to, to go through the process to bring forth a a uh a recommendation or multiple recommendations to the building grounds committee uh through the the process that we have at South Eagan High School. Which includes community council.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the only thing I wanna make sure of is that community council is, I mean, I would, I would imagine only one board member here, but I would imagine that the board still wants community council involved in these things, right? Because they're in the school constitution, like. And I'm usually like, I'm just used to seeing community council and like when I was here before, in documentation around major things, I would consider this to be a major thing. So. Uh, that's why.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John. Apology, John.
Yeah, it was harder on Zoom. Apology. I mean, yeah, I mean, there's like five major constituencies in the Sovietian community for the constitution. Community council is certainly one of them. I mean, the representative on the interpretation committee are community council, board, admin, faculty and student. So it's kind of the gem's point in support of it. It's like that. Somewhere in this framework, those five perspectives should be represented and yeah, just going through this constitution interpretation committee process, we'll talk more about hopefully in the next meeting, but it, those, those viewpoints are there's, there's unity in some things and divergence in others. Fascinating. And so that's a really important perspective to to add to the major decision making, I think. I'd like to see that woven.
So, so why don't um I hear what you guys are saying. Why don't um Jim and I can work with Steve and Mike about a process of where community council would fall in this process and then come back to in April, maybe with a either update or change or.
We could, I mean, I'm just being, I'm interested to hear from the other.
Yeah.
One, two.
And I know Raj, you had something you wanna add?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I mean, I, I, I just sort of acknowledge what you're saying, Jim, and then John, you were echoing, I think, about the value of community council. Uh, obviously I've got a lot to learn here. And I think Steve, what you're saying about somebody who's passionate about science, having those sorts of students involved is absolutely a wonderful idea. I think just making sure that we have of those sorts of people involved in the con- conversation, but it's connected to the community council, I think would be um as much as possible, but would be a wonderful approach. Uh, and the other thing, I think, um, Mike, you had, had mentioned about um one of the things you just said that really kind of uh in- intrigued me was this idea of like, you know, potentially presenting multiple options. Um, and I, I love that idea that it, it, that any sort of group that's doing this sort of thing doesn't necessarily come back with one thing like that, it, you know, three ideas that, that might be feasible. I think give people the opportunity to, to have conversations uh about those ideas uh would be really, really valuable if that's, if it's possible. Um, cause I would certainly hate that a, a t- team goes down a one path and then it gets brought up to another group and, and they're um you know, that, that's not the, that perspective isn't shared with, with the group. Uh, so and, and I guess the other thing I would all, all say with that is if they can come with several recommendations, the thinking behind each of those recommendations is really valuable to me. I would love to understand why they like certain ideas, what's the detriment and how they've come to evolve their thinking. So just again, one person here, but um, you know, it, because the, 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 what they're going to do is going to have a long-term impact to the facilities of the school. I think that would be um an approach that I would encourage.
Would it be too presumptuous or too early to appoint two board members on building grounds and charge the administration to soliciting the advertisement for community members to serve on the building?
We can do that and we can cut, we, we can work and talk about a role of community council and come back again and, and we just kind of talk about that first. But I think to get started, let's get the, the board building grounds people.
And have, and ask us to advertise.
Advertise for the community members and we want.
When we have the two members that we appoint to this committee, then figure out. Instead of putting some people into.
Sure.
That if you're. So why don't we ask two of our uh uh community members who are on community council to represent community council? And maybe a couple of students from community council. So you have two different points to do from community council.
Well, we want, we want, we want to figure out how they, what, how they're gonna fit into the role first. And then I think we'll, we'll structure. Cause right now we don't know how, where we would wanna place community council into the process.
Oh, we're looking for two community members. Solicitation's gonna go out. Who's interested, right? We have presumably those are adults in community, not students. We have adults in the community who've already went to the community council. I'm suggesting, why don't we tap their shoulder to see if they're interested in serving in this task force? And thereby represent community council through the process. It's like two birds with one pepper.
You don't think I know this.
Oh, we do. Oh, sorry. James, I see your hands. Thank you. Yes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so to, to Steve's point, I, I do not want to delay Harriman from and I don't, we're not gonna delay them because there already wheels of motion there. But I would not want to delay any membership from the task force to review anything. I think as a board, we can easily add um student council to this in April. Um, but you know, move forward, get the thing rolling, get the, get the wheels out, put it out to the community to, to get people on. Um.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's why I'm thinking, I, I think we can get the members appointed to the um Building and Grounds Committee. Now we can get the advertisement out. I think community, I think it's okay to get separate community members involved because I think it's good to have separate. Then we, let's come back and, and the building grounds people could work or.
Yeah, we have, we have clarification. So my, my original question was, I don't, I don't wanna get involved in the trap of telling the administration how to do their job. My question is more along the lines of in terms of policy and governance, community council should be involved. So they need to come back to us in April and tell us how that's gonna happen. Cause that should be our expectation as a board. That's our governing function. But it's not our governing function to tell them how to do it or legislate to them how to do it. We're not educators. That's their job. In my view, that's just my view.
Yeah.
And my experience.
Uh, okay. I'm really curious then. So is i- i- if we think of uh from a constitutional perspective here, does it bubble from the, that task force to community council to us?
Sure. I appreciate what Mr. Manning is. I, 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 I hear that it's necessary, we need to, to incorporate community council. I'd like to start with, with Dana. I, I'd like to have some time to, to figure out how to make that happen in the most efficient, appropriate way. Um, in a real way, uh and, and then Raj, to your point, we can figure out if it's joining or if it's another layer. And I don't know that answer. I'm gonna have to give us, if that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't need to tell that not to hide or anything.
Yeah.
Just to, that's what I mean, responsibility. Yeah.
So here's how I would like, li- listening to everyone, here's what I'd like to move forward. I'd like to get two board members appointed to the building and grounds committee tonight. Then I'll ask Steve and Dana to work with people at South Eagan High School to figure out how the task force is gonna interact with community council and to go through this process. And then before they, you know, with the intent, before we move recommendations or suggestions or presentation from the task force to the building and grounds group, that there's a, an internal process that involves all the stakeholders. So uh what I'm looking for is two members to the, if you guys are, are comfortable with this, two members to the building grounds from the board. And then we'll come back in April with a little more of a process on how the task force is gonna act, you know, interact with community council.
Okay, thank you. So let's talk about the building and grounds people. Who is interested? I know we had two people involved originally with the science lab that I don't know.
So if I could be so bold, I would like to nominate Raj, um because he's interested in sort of the multi-dynamic component to it. And I think it's good for somebody like that to be in at the, at the ground level versus us having to revisit and do stuff at the end. And James has the sovereignty representative because this is his line of work and this is exactly what he does. And I think it'd be a great addition to it. Second.
All right. You guys good with that? Raj and James, you've just been nominated to be part of building in grounds and work on this process.
Yeah, James, you wanna answer first?
Uh, is this the Zoom curse or no? Oh, I, I, I gladly accept. Thank you.
Just, sorry, I, I was just in assembly dress, trying to see what the obligations were for it, like how, when they meet and things like that. I don't see that there. What is, how often is it?
Uh, in the past, it was um tours, monthly. And then as, you know, as we get closer to the building, the project, we might need more. Um, in the past, it's a weekend, I believe it was an evening. You and I came in evening. It was evening. It was not.
But that was a while ago.
And it's probably, it's, you'll be on, you know, your availability, work together on that.
Yeah, I, I, I would be delighted to help. Thank, thank you, Steve.
Okay, and we also have the charge to advertise in the community.
Yes. Please, please. And I um we want to, I think we wanna ensure we can get, you know, Amherst and Mount Vernon if possible. I think that's important because it's an impactful.
Right, and there's connections through projects.
Absolutely.
That's our, so we will solicit both.
Okay.
Perhaps a hundred percent.
Okay.
And I have another question. Maybe this is something to add to your thinking about integrating community council, which is um, I mean, I'm with the principal, okay with the like the task force being at, we'll see how it ends up, but would it be, if a member of the building and ground wanted to attend a task force meeting, do you just hear what's from the street? What is the architect saying? What is the task force? What's on the cutting room floor? What's that process look like? Would they be uh allowed to come? Would they be aware of when the, when the task force was meeting so that they could at least just come in and take notes and I mean, let the task force do its thing. It's not to interfere. It's just to be a witness, a bear witness to the process. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I've never excluded anybody from attending any meeting ever. Um, probably the calendar wouldn't be created around that person's schedule. Cause some of this is to, to connect with teachers and they're in, in this, in the kids and, and you know, their schedules.
Totally understood. But it's just be, just be the opportunity, oh, the task, the, the building grounds committee members would be aware of when the task force's meeting schedule is, if they could show up wanted to show up or, or whatever they could, just listen.
Yeah.
So they will require awareness of their schedule. And then they can show if they can, they can, they can.
So, but to be clear for me, just wanna make sure of the direction, the, the building grounds is a ninety-one A posted minutes.
Yes.
They'll make sure.
Yes.
Definitely do another district.
Yeah. Announcement posted minutes. So that, that's the, the um not the task force.
Correct. It's a distinction there.
Correct. The task force is not a ninety-one, they're just a task force. They're just doing like, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
There are more people reached out opportunity to, to observe the good work of the task force.
Okay, anything else on that? That's Mr. K.
Actually, the still the reports received.
Yes.
So before we move on to that piece, I know you don't wanna um address the principal's report, which is two things that hopefully we can put one on a SEU agenda uh in, in hopefully in the next month or two. And then number two, um just something to acquire about sort of the observation piece, but yeah. Um, math, specifically the math curriculum and the mapping between our various districts. Uh, so elementary to middle, middle to high school. And I just wanna understand, because I know in the principal's report, we talk about, you know, the, the, the professional development PD that just occurred. I'd love to understand how we are now, cause from what I understand, the middle school is piloting a new math program. How does that map over to the high school? And are they talking? And so whether we could do that at an SAU meeting or if you feel. And so whether we could do that at an S A U meeting, or if you feel it's more appropriate here, it would just add that to to a future. Also of conversation.
Absolutely. And I know we're we are jointly having a. Presentation on the math curriculum work that's been going on in May. That right?
Here, exactly.
Here, yes.
I don't want to waste time at that meeting to understand what the middle school is doing and how it's mapping.
Yeah, so we'll have to. You'll have to let me know if that falls into that or if it's a separate conversation. If you can let us know and then we'll make sure it gets on the right. In agenda.
Because like the building blocks, we we're going to talk about the writing program here in a minute. Like. We identified the need coming out of our middle school and the writing curriculum and then we're offering a program here to offset or complement that or. Correct it. Uh and I want to share the math piece to them.
Just one last, any last questions on reports received? My my voice. Okay, moving on. Uh board correspondence. So this is new. This is something we're going to add in every month. This is going to be if we receive emails. Through, you know, our S A U email from community members. We're going to get some information on here and it's going to summarize maybe what the information, what what the questions were about or what the comment was about. So we can make sure we're addressing any community comments and questions and they get addressed through the board Jedi. That was a suggestion that came through my and I thought it was a great idea. So if there's anything you've received directly from email that maybe it wasn't sent to the rest of the board, you feel needs to be addressed, please let us know. We'll make sure. This gets out of somewhere.
Like a compliment about Mr. Dr. Chamberlain?
Yes, yes. Was that awarded?
Yes, oh, yes, I'm finished by fourteen. It was Sunday after uh February break where I got the official notice, but I'm now a scholar.
It is now Dr. Chamberlain.
Yeah, well. I would like to be judged by others. The doctors.
Because we pushed off. We pushed you off a few times asking you to come back and help.
Little bit here, but my role change made a little bit more difficult to squeeze it in. Um but it's all good. Um my wife is very happy. My kids are happy. I'm happy. No more homework. I I don't have any homework. I've been over for fourteen years. But thank you for your support.
It's a long road.
And it's uh uh but it is. It it might it to his generosity and graciousness through the doctor on the letterhead. So.
Thank you.
For a couple of months left.
That's awesome. Okay. Presentation on the writing course. I know we have a few people here who can come forward. Do you want to? Bring a second chair up and make you introduce yourselves for everybody because.
It's funny that you say that because we were rehearsing. And they said, do we introduce ourselves or will we be introduced? And I said, oh, you'll be introduced. Um, so Elizabeth Stravino is here with us. She is our dean of faculty and former humanities domain leader. And then Kristen Yeton, this is her first time um visiting the board. She is our humanities domain leader. So in addition to teaching two classes, she also. Um leads the English and social studies departments. And I'm very excited for you to um get to hear about the first year writing intensive course.
You'll just let me go.
I was gonna say, I will give you some very non subtle cues. To the next. Um, so I'm sitting up here right now with Kristen, not because I don't think she can execute this presentation flawlessly. But because when the writing intensive work began, she was not yet with us at Southern High School. So I'm going to speak to the first few slides of this presentation. And then I will send it off to her very capable hands. And with that, Steve, we will move to the next slide. So just as a um quick reminder, perhaps some new news to our newer board members here tonight. The um course really came about from some graduation requirements committee work that was done. I say some, but it was a very. Robust and thorough process. The bulk of the work happened in twenty two to twenty three. Um, so the need for that course arose from a number of different data points there through, you know, student interviews, student feedback. From the committee itself, looking at various data points. Um, once the course was approved, we then moved on to some curriculum development and. That began as a result of partially a department wide self study that was examining a lot of writing work. Uh, we also worked on visioning the course kind of from the ground up, understanding what our seniors needed. And then what freshmen maybe needed from there filtered down. We worked on, I'll just keep talking. We worked on some professional development um that was available to the entire English department. Our student learning coordinator also joined that that professional development and learning happened um in June of twenty twenty four. And we were fortunate to have a lot of great people gathered around the table for that. That was a mix of learning and also planning. Next slide.
Sorry about that.
Don't worry. I just talked right through it. It was great. Uh, so one of the things that we eventually landed with was really in line with um southern values, right? With this idea of differentiation and making um this class accessible to all learners. We know from research that the workshop model is best practice when it comes to writing instruction. So that is what we modeled this class under. That's really what we were imagining from the get go as we started our work over the summer. Um, and appropriately, because it was over the summer where I handed things off to Kristen. This is where she is going to pick up. In this presentation and talk about what that um teacher worked looked like and what the continued student work in iteration has looked like. Over the course of this school year. So to speak to this slide as well, the workshop model is already working. I've taught two sections of the course. And I can really say with confidence that this has made the course accessible to all students. So when we sat down to start planning the curriculum for this course, we knew that it would have to be a common experience for every freshman. So we were very intentional setting rubrics and syllabus that were going to be followed by all teachers in the course. And the workshop model also lent itself very nicely to that. Um, the way a typical class is run is that that begins as a whole class instruction. It is focused on a skill. There's a mentor text. There's some group practice and then kids get time to work independently. Where this is valuable is that in that independent time, as a teacher, you're able to go and offer assistance and guidance to kids who need it. You're also able to conference and extend the learning for students who are ready to go beyond what other students are currently doing. And class ends, coming back together again to discuss our learning about that skill. So we've seen great success already with our freshmen in this part. So to begin, just brief overview, there are three types of writing when we're talking about academic writing. So we have informational or expository depending who you are, what you want to call it, argumentative writing and narrative writing. Through our professional development over the summer, we really made the choice to focus on depth over breadth. And two modes of writing were selected. So originally, the original two were narrative writing and then informational writing. We selected narrative writing because we really believed that this was an engaging entry point for students. Who are coming into high school to make it accessible, to have um engaging, high level mentor texts. That they could model their writing patterns after, to examine them for authors craft, to look at grammatical structures. And then informational writing was our second choice because it is foundational writing. It's transferable across disciplines. And this was right and then they were going to need and use the rest of their academic career. So. We were fortunate in November. So at that midway point of semester one, those of us that were teaching the course semester one, we had a half professional development day to gather. And reflect as practitioners on what was working and how we were using our insights to respond and inform our instructional practices. And some of our big takeaways, we noticed having just wrapped up the narrative unit that our kids were really. They were pretty strong. They were able to take what we were teaching them, adapt it into their own modes of. Of work and really produce things that they themselves were proud of. Our other big takeaway from that meeting was the invaluable nature of the writer's notebook that we were having the kids compile. They were putting their mentor texts directly in the notebook. They were annotating. And they were really creating their own resource guide for when they had to go back and revise or look for a strategy to use in their writing process. And we were really recognizing, we had this robust plan to see how students were working within our building. And we also. Wanted to start looking at data points outside of our classroom data at this point as well. One of the bigger actionable takeaways from that November day was the determination that, hey, these kids are pretty good at narrative writing. Let's get a baseline for how they are at expository writing. So we created a pre assessment. Came back together, analyzed that work, and that resulted in targeted instruction for the rest of semester one. Um, the takeaways from that pre assessment was that we really needed to focus with our ninth graders on integrating transitional words and phrases. Understanding the functioning craft of an introduction. And structuring paragraphs around a clear claim using evidence and elaboration. This November date was not a standalone professional development opportunity for our teachers around this intensive writing class. Much of the English department's work this year has been focused around writing. And this went hand in hand with the self study work that began last year. Examining writing nine through twelve, looking for areas of strength and areas where we needed to reinforce learning. Uh, the department has spent time reflecting, calibrating the writing in order to align our instructional assessment practices. We formed a P L C dedicated to collaboration around best practices and writing instruction. And then we started really digging into the SAS data. The SAS data seemed like a really great yes. And we point for us because. The these were ninth graders. They took the SAS in the spring. Of twenty twenty four and they were our students in the fall of twenty twenty four. Um, and it's important to note that up until the spring of twenty twenty four, SAS only assessed on either informational writing or argumentative writing. It was a fifty fifty, whatever the computer gave you. This spring was the first time that narrative writing was included on the SAS, which is why you're going to see other graphs. But looking at this, this did affirm our anecdotal data. We're looking at kid, you know, fifty five percent of kids were proficient in their elaboration and writing narrative. And fifty nine percent were proficient in their organization and purposeful use of language in narrative writing. And obviously, there is room for growth, but this seemed to be a relative strength. When we looked at informational writing, um, the data suggests that there has been a strong upward trend. And the ability of our students to write, to explain or inform. One of the things I am really excited to do is looking to partner with A M S. This data shows that they have found success in the area of informational writing. And I want to know and understand so that I can capitalize on the trend, enforce the work that they're doing and continue to keep this upward arc. In the abilities of our students in informational writing. When we looked. When we looked at argumentative writing, we noticed. A little bit more of a bumpy road, right? So this was an area in which we need to continue improvement. And this became one of the touchstones that we used to make an informed decision at the end of semester one to incorporate. Argumentative writing as a major unit of study and really back off the narrative writing. Um, multiple, right? We have creative writing. Kids are. Relatively strong in their narrative writing and argumentative writing. Again, is used in the academic world and beyond. And this was something that we felt the shift needed to be made. So at the end of the first semester, we gathered together and we debriefed, ran a protocol. How did the first semester go? Uh, we established a line of communication to the teachers who were going to be taking over the writing class for the second semester. We created a shared drive of resources. All of the information was open and shared between the two semesters. Uh, we revised the curriculum in response to academic reflection and the desire to build higher leverage, transversal academic writing skills. We reviewed and revised the rubrics and we created a formal pre assessment that will now begin at the beginning of every semester. So this is just sort of that quick, quick take of our units of study. You'll notice February, it was a short, it ended up being two weeks on narrative writing, used as an entry point, get them into the routines and habits of the class. Get them comfortable with one another in an area where there is some success. Um, followed by the expository writing and the brand new unit for this iteration of the course was to add and focus on argumentative writing. And we also added in uh a focus on revision practices because we were noticing kids would get feedback. They wouldn't use the feedback to revise. So really also focusing in on how do we revise our writing? Is some capturing of student voice. The students are reflected at the end of the course. Um, and you'll see some wonderful takeaways from the different classes. You know, before writing was too hard for me. A year ago, I never would have written outside of school. I started to outline for my other classes, which has helped me not get blocked while writing. Um, one student said I needed to add a lot of quotes into my writing and now I use this skill in other classes. So we're really starting to already see the benefits of this transference in other classes where teachers are saying, hey, they outlined or I didn't need to teach them about parenthetical citations. Um, they're they're internalizing these skills, which is what we're hoping to see. And the biggest thing is that this work is continuing, right? We will continue to implement the work and learning from this school year with an emphasis on growth and achievement. We'll be analyzing this year's SAS score. So these eighth graders, we will have their SAS data. We'll be able to analyze it and implement. Responsive teaching in the fall based on what we gather from those spring tests. Uh, we will continue to iterate based on the response of that pre assessment we planned to give at the beginning of the class. And we're also designing a system to look at growth and achievement on local assessments such as the J L P, lab reports, their artist statements, any kind of academic writing. As well as seeing how this class impacts longitudinally on things like the P S A T ten, P S A T and.
All right, question.
One of the earlier slides, there was a a mention of the writer's notebook. Did you go back to that one? Yeah, when it says, I couldn't write it all now, but something. Second phrase needs. And we need students to maintain mentor texts for reference. What I what does that mean?
Okay, great. So. In a mini lesson, Steve, we are focusing on the author's use of tone when they're writing. We would provide the students with a mentor text, an article, an excerpt, something that demonstrates really effective writing craft. Uh, some teachers were having those put in for their writing notebook. Some people weren't. And those of us that were having them glue the mentor text right into their notebook. Realized the kids were going back. They were like, oh, wait, tone. That was that weird thing we read about. And they were going back and they were really gaining the insight again. And it was becoming a workbook for them that they could use as a reference point. Um, so almost every lesson we teach is paired with a mentor text that we examine as a group to analyze before they try that skill on their own. That if you're.
Yes, yes, thank you. And um. Uh, another question was um about the. It occurred to me when you said capturing the student voice. It sounds like there's a lot of effort done in the classroom. So. Are you anticipating or did you have to do any battle with um AI writing? Or how are you? Planning on or or currently toward tackling that challenge?
That is a huge question, a huge part of my job. It is something that is out there. We're seeing it. Um, we're having really honest conversations with kids. We're learning a lot. The kids are learning a lot. Um. And I think we're just, I know I've been attending workshops left and right, trying to figure out best practice around AI use. It is something we're seeing. And I think. We're trying to be very mindful of talking to students about it. Doing the best we can with the research that we're being provided.
Yeah, yeah.
I I think um also one of the things that we're hoping for from this course, you know, oftentimes when we have conversations with students who. Use AI for writing or engage in um issues with academic integrity, it is born out of a lack of confidence, right? Or some last minute panic and looking really long term, the hope, right, is that you really foster these foundational writing skills early on. And that panic about completing a writing assignment is a little bit less likely to sink in. But you know, there's. Um, handwriting, we are able to track student typing in um Google Docs with some success. So we're using all the resources at our disposal.
And you can you see their baseline that comes in. Like, wow, that's not you. Like, is there some obvious clues I've heard? Uh, and then just two accolades. No, I think that's done. I know vertical alignment challenges was one of the reasons why the writing course came to us. And when you said you're partnering with A M S, that that's very valuable to you. So I. I support that and totally encourage you to do as much as you can on that front to give it to you. Feel like you need. And hopefully it's a collaborative experience with the folks over there in this. And then I really appreciate your evolution to starting from narrative writing and the expository and you're finding that you need to interpret more argumentative. Because when I first said, I was like, wow, that's. See, the informational goes into argumentative and your senior projects the case, like it all sort of culminates in there. So. It's having started somewhere and then you looked at your data, you say, oh, actually, we need to evolve it. Iterated again, um and and and. Include it more argumentative writing. So I just. Include it more argumentative writing, so I just applaud you for the observation and the evolution, thank you.
Mr. Gep, I see your hand raised.
I have lots of questions, so I can wait if somebody has like one or two questions, Eric. Alright, well, first off, thank, thank you, thank you, thank you, uh, I love this, um, this is all new to me in terms of learning what we're doing at Sohegan. Uh, I was a liberal arts major and so I love, uh, I love writing, um, and so this is really exciting for me. Early on, you had um, talked about the ability to, you've, you created a, a structure here that allows differentiation. And I'm curious about if you could just elaborate on one of the way, some of the ways you've seen that differentiation manifest itself. From an individual teacher with the students in their room versus other different teachers, things like that, is there, is there anything that is? Uh, you could share early on here from that so far?
Sure, I can speak to my personal experience, I had, in one of my classes, I had two transition students. Uh, and we were working very clearly on graphic organizers and very basic, how do we write a paragraph? And connect our ideas. And at the same time, I had students in that class that were in the ninety fifth percentile on the SAS. And we were finding multiple sources and we were talking about internal tech citations and they were doing much higher level work. Guided through that conferencing time as opposed to students who were, you know, solidly average, who were taking that lesson and making it their own. In, in the way that they could. So I think that one-on-one time really allows for teachers to get creative in how they are helping all students rise.
That's wonderful, that's, I mean, that's some of the beauty of Sohegan, right, and so, uh, commend you for that. How was that personal experience in terms of like finding the balance of your time on where? You've only got so, you, there's only one of you, you've only got so much time in a day, how, how have you found that experience of trying to say? Okay, this, this student needs a, uh, my term, not your term. You know, perhaps um, more, more of your focus to help them grow to a, a more appropriate level um, versus not. And again, this is just, you know, you're, you're inadvertently not spending as much time with the ninety fifth percentile person. Because you know they can go off on their own, but you know, what's next for them, so how has that experience been for you?
I think it comes down to really careful and intentional planning. Uh, coming into the class with those structures already designed. I would preload the writing notebooks for certain students, I would paste graphic organizers in and they, they didn't have to, you know, put pencil to paper. Try and figure out that organization was already there for them. Whereas opposed to some of those students who I knew I was going to have the opportunity to challenge. I would have those already in their notebook, ready to go like, these are your expectations and you know, this is what I would like you to work on to like in touch base if you had a form with a few minutes. And we've intentionally tried to keep class sizes smaller so that we can provide that level of individualization.
I'm not crying, there's just dust in my hotel room, I'm sorry. And this, like, so like, this is really just, okay, now this is a little bit of a side comment here is, one of the things during the campaign for this election. Some, some taxpayers said. You, you know, teachers should be teaching all eight blocks, I'm like, no, 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 no. The preparation that happens in those free blocks is so, so critical and so to hear that you're taking advantage of that and doing some like just incredible work. For the, for your students, so thank you for that, I mean, that's really meaningful, so, uh, I gratitude there. In the uh, slide about the narrative unit, uh, you said most students demonstrated proficiency. Is most fifty plus one, is like, how do you, how do you think about, like, what do you do with that information when it's, you know, like, how? Like, so, so then what is, how are you thinking about that?
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, um, I think when, when I said most students were proficient, what we're saying is. At, on the policy narrative rubric that we used, we found an overwhelming majority of the students were scoring a three or higher. And that also was part of the reason we chose to shrink that unit down.
Yep, okay, good, thank you. The expository writing, uh, the pre-assessment work. When, I, 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 I apologize that you're, you had, you, you used some words that I, I didn't write down exactly what you said, but I think something along the lines, the word, work was brought back. Uh, did you mean that to all the teachers that are teaching this and there was sort of a collaboration, looking at that work collectively for the pre-assessment? Yeah, can you expand on that a little, please?
Sure, so we are getting into the practice of the Department of Calibrating Work Against Rubrics together. So work will be, you know, four or five samples will be shared out without names, we'll read, score it, and then we will talk together. How, well, why did you give that a three, why did you give that a four? And we're trying to norm the work and make sure that we are giving students again, that equitable experience by all receiving scores the same way.
Beautiful, I love that, thank you very much, um, and then I, you, John covered it a little bit about like the AMS connection. When we think about like this, the uh, the proficiency of the eighth, well, the incoming ninth graders. Uh, is that? My word, not yours, is there concern that they're coming in at that level? Is it simply that's an awareness, that's consistent with other districts? How would, like, how are we thinking about that, like, do we, like, do we need to really? Reinforce further down into the, to the middle school and so on, or is this like, no, when you come into ninth grade, this is where you should be at?
Roger, Dana, hi.
Hi.
Is the owl going to point to me? So, uh, this is a good connection to the principal's report, which we're not discussing, but I'm sure that you all poured over. Um, and we talked about the work that we did with Liz Cannon, our district director of curriculum accountability. So we've already met with Liz to talk about the literacy needs of our, of our rising ninth graders. And we did that around the table with folks from AMS and Sohegan. Or we did a data protocol to look at the students that we're receiving to, to start to think about what kind of supports. Might we need, where might we want to push some kids, because we know that they're gonna come in. They're gonna come in maybe exceeding expectations that we, that we have. So part of that work with that literacy uh, piece with Liz wasn't just like planning off for English, planning for reading services, but also. What might the implications be for this ninth grade writing intensive? Because we know that um, part of the reason for the mentor tax is because you don't teach reading, or you don't teach writing absent of reading. Um, so that's really informing, informing the work. So, um, are, are we concerned? No, we're just aware, because it. That harkens back to Kristen's point about uh, the importance of deep intentional planning.
Yep, yep, wonderful, thanks Dana.
A higher level take on transitions. Uh, and, and data, you know, we look at data as something that. Is telling us a story or, or putting out there. Uh, something that we need to look at and we always treat it as pretty even, whether we're going from eighth to ninth grade from Amherst to Sohegan. Or we're going from sixth grade to seventh grade from MB to. And you're like Amherst, and so the point. Us, what we want to do is always look at the, at data in, in a very even. You know, you know, very intentional, thoughtful manner that tells us, you know, it makes us aware of where people are at. The other, the second piece is, um, there's this, there's this hint of. That the districts or the schools aren't talking to each other and aren't aligned in some of the conversations around transition. Um, and, and, and that's just, just not the case between the way Dr. Jennings in the student service department works. And Liz Cannon as the director of curriculum accountability and all four principals. Pretty much on a monthly basis, or talking about transition, not just in a physically transitioning, but. You know, the, the students and, and their information is going from one place to another, um, that is the through line in SEU thirty nine. Uh, that is something that's really, you know, been a change in, in, in operation uh, for us is, is how we matriculate students through. Our, our SAU as three districts. Um, sometimes it's, it's hard to communicate to each board effectively, because. You know, they're, they're three separate districts and they don't always know what's happening in Amherst, the Sohegan to MB to Amherst. Uh, but please know that it, it is definitely something that, that is happening and there's this. Also, this preconceived notion that, that the data coming from Amherst is something that the Sohegan people look at and go. It's not good enough. And that, that is just not the case. And uh, I want you to be quick to, to, to answer that. Very, we're very uh, pleased with the efforts and the work uh, down at Amherst and we're always looking. To be aware of the story that it's telling and make our moves very intentionally as, as we, you know, onboard kids from Amherst to, to ninth grade.
Yeah, that's great, that, and I apologize, you know, I, well, I took that, the, the, the notes about the S, the SAS data and. Used loaded language and I, I, that was inappropriate of me to have done, so I apologize, Mike, you shouldn't have had to uh, say that. Uh, so that, that, that's a mistake on me, uh, the last thing I, I was curious about is, it sounds like there's also. Like some really beautiful benefits for executive functioning here, does that, is that true, are you seeing that? Because, you know, I worry about like sort of the, the COVID. You know, that I've heard that that was impactful to executive functioning for, for our youngsters and are you finding that there is also? I mean, it sounds like from those, some of those comments that the students had, the, that they are learning how to learn. From this uh, and well beyond the writing, but I'm just curious what your thoughts are related to executive functioning from this program.
Absolutely, I think so much of successful writing comes from organization. And we are trying to equip them with as many tools as possible and different strategies to organize their thinking and their writing. So I do agree with you that it is benefiting their executive functioning as well.
Yep, great, wonderful, thank you uh, for humoring me with all my questions, I just say, I just think this is incredible, so, well done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
Thanks, I'll be brief, uh, just three questions, number one, um, have any students tested out of the class? Because I know that was one of the criteria that, uh, you guys brought up last year when we approved the program, that that would be an option.
So, um, no students have tested out of the class yet, one of the things that we will be planning for long term is setting up a system in which. Um, students want to demonstrate competency over the summer. Um, that they will be able to do so, that won't be happening this summer, but it is absolutely on our planning radar.
And then last year at the Smith, you guys did a great job presenting what your feedback process is, right? How do we go ahead and evaluate success, what does it look like? And constantly reevaluating programming to make sure that changes are implemented either immediately or, or prompted. Have we noticed anything in that feedback process with this particular program? That you are comfortable sharing?
So, I mean, I think a lot of what Kristen was able to speak to tonight was a part of that feedback process, right? Using it really to inform um, the instruction from one semester to another. I think what we. Might be able to tell by the end of this year would be looking at how students, these same students are performing in their humanities class, right? How are those scores turning out at the end of the year? Um, how this second iteration or round of the writing course, this second semester. Is finding success with our students, right? How are they demonstrating their competency at the end of the semester versus the beginning of the semester? So I think since we haven't done a full year's worth of the course yet, it's a little hard to say, but we are. Super lucky that Kristen has gathered so many data points and so many different ways that we can look at, measure success, not just within the course. Unit to unit or within one semester, but also over the course of the year and other classes students are taking.
Thank you, so my third question, actually, piggybacks to what you just said, but I'm, I'm assuming that, like, with the JLP. Uh, process that we now reincorporated back into the, the regular class curriculum. That this foundational skill is going to actually set them up for even more success. And so we're actually really covering the JLP freshman year, sophomore year, and then kind of being quizzed on at junior year. So, like, that's, that's what I, I captured when you said, but my question is, like, four years from now. Clearly, you can't evaluate the program after six months, right? So it's unreasonable to everybody, but it's nice that you shared this type of feedback, so four years from now, are we going to be in a situation where we may say, hey? This is working or this isn't working, or do you think it's gonna be a point closer to that? Like, we're gonna start to see the, the positive benefits junior year or sophomore.
I do not, very in fact. Yeah, because I was, you guys cited, you know, because I was talking to, I was talking to a group of teachers who were collaborating on our PD day on uh. On the eleventh and they were talking about the JLP and what they're seeing and. Kind of some of the frustrations around in-text citations and, and what the kids know or don't know and then to hear. Here, right, and then I, yes, this is gonna be so great. Um, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna need to wait long to see the impact, right? I think I'm really eager to, what, to Elizabeth's point, I'm really eager to get some preliminary feedback. From semester two of students' English classes who've taken the writing class semester one, I'm, I'm, I'm really eager to talk to. Um, social studies teachers in, uh, in sophomore year next year for these students to see where they're transferring over those skills. I think um, with the addition of. You know, the additional focus on the expository writing, right? We should, we should be able to talk with science teachers about how are, how are the labs looking? So, um, I don't think we're gonna need to wait that long.
And, and Mike, for you, um, just to address what you just said about sort of, you know, inter-district mapping. Is there a point in time where we may be able to take this back into regional curriculum and. Free up maybe this writing course time space for students at the high school level to then go back to what we're doing in terms of other types of classes that it's on board? Like, do you see that as success, like, the end of this, this trial?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's. Been something we've discussed at this point, you know, we're, we're pretty early on in, in this. Um, I would love to see kind of how this plays out over the next two or three years. You know, as kids matriculate into their sophomore, your, your, their fourth year here. And then, you know, you know. Evaluate as we go and see what kind of a story tells us. And um, and, you know, also simultaneously, there are other things happening. K A and Amherst that could impact where kids come into ninth grade, right? And so we'll have to see where all that kind of aligns.
So I'm assuming you're gonna get a lot of nuggets through this program here, that you're then gonna be able to filter down to the lower grades to say. Um, this part of making up, but like, hey, we knew that sequencing was a significant problem in our ninth graders or rising ninth graders. Maybe we need to invent that in curriculum in sixth third.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly what the align, right, uh, uh, the vertical alignment that, that you look for, you know. The data, you know, kind of tells you a story, the evaluation of programs tells you a story. Uh, and I think with, you know, the people that we have at the building level, with the three people here and the other administrators and Kristen and her team and. Uh, Dr. Jennings and, and Liz Cannon, I think we are set up to, to, you know, have. The people there to put us through the process to make sure that we have. Uh, the things that are needed to have, or things. We're, we're set up to evaluate the things that are happening and make the adjustments as we move forward. That's where we're at.
Thank you, very happy to hear everything you're, right, for your job.
I, I just want to say thank you for, to the board for supporting this, I think that it was really good foresight. Um, we, we now have the mandate from the state. Within three oh sixes to include. Additional writing instruction and so we got ahead of that curve. Um, and I also think that what hopefully the takeaway from Kristen's presentation was. The time that it takes to deliver this type of instruction and why it is as, of, an additional class. Is because she is delivering instruction to all of those kids, all of those kids at the same time. Um, in writing in that workshop model, it just takes time, so I just really appreciate the support of it.
Absolutely, it's a differentiator, except he can sort of stand out in terms of the things that we're focused on, so, awesome.
Thank you, last questions? Thank you so much, Kristen, nice to meet you. Thank you again, thank you so much.
Coming, we appreciate the, all the hard work and the, you know, the, the engineers, students.
Our pleasure, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna.
Sure.
So, yeah, next on our.
Yeah.
I'm chair. Hey, Stephanie. You hear me okay?
Yes.
Can I hear you?
You can't hear me at all?
Okay. Uh, sorry to interrupt your agenda, I unfortunately need to drop off and leave the meeting. I do know where we have a non-public on the agenda.
We can catch you up, I'll catch you up tomorrow.
Okay, are you okay taking notes?
Yes, I will take the notes, no worries.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm already skipping out on duties, look at, look at that.
Thanks for joining us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next in our group is policies and Mr. Glover, would you like to update us?
The PDF. Uh, supporting document will really. Give you all the rationale behind each specific policy, uh, the overview. Is the title nine policies, um. Mirage, Jim particularly, these have been waffling back and forth, it's been a. It's an unstable situation. Um, so these are, uh, we, we actually adopted a set of these back in what, December or January, I think? And we were also already changing them. And so we had this discussion at the SAU level last month, and so here they are for every adoptive event that levels, so adopting these will get us to current. The current state of the. The legal situation, the other ones are just for, in the moment, of course, of policy review.
These. Title nine ones are, they're kind of going back to what they. These Title IX ones are, they're kind of going back to what they were to 2020. Is that right?
So they, there was, yeah, they, there were some changes made last presidential administration that kind of broadened some of these policies, and now they basically revert it back to what they were before those changes were implemented. Okay, so they haven't been changed yet again. They kind of went a direction and then they all got put back in where they used to be. Okay, so that's where we're at, is basically where we started.
And this group, we really wanted, instead of doing a two-read policy, if we can tonight, definitely do a pass these if possible because of the critical nature of the Title IX. What policies are we following? I think we need to be very clear on. So do we, do you want to talk about the other ones first?
The other policies?
The other policy, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't anticipate talking about the other policies unless somebody has a question about.
Do those need to be passed tonight as well? Do those have anything to do with the Title IX?
The other policies are totally separate. They could be, they should be first read.
So for the, for the new board members, Raj, what we typically do with board policies is we have a two, two separate meeting read. So the first one is they're in the packet. We've hopefully read them. You can ask some questions. We can figure out if something needs to be tweaked or sent back to a policy committee for work. And then the second meeting, if nothing comes, you know, if everything's fine and those clear the first read, then the second meeting, we would then vote to adopt them. But with the Title IX policies that are listed AC, ACR, ACAC and ACAC just of the nature of the concerns with making sure we align with the current administration and the legal terms, we want to make sure that we pass these tonight. So we, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the first reading and to adopt these tonight. If that's.
I move. Go ahead.
Clarification, because these are related to Title.
Hey Raj, hold on, we're gonna make a motion, then we'll talk about in discussion piece. So have a.
I move that we waive the first reading and adopt the Title IX policies as presented.
I guess second, second, Mr. Manning. Okay, discussion. So Raj.
Sorry, I'm such a rookie. Title IX, has that all, have all of these policies been reviewed by legal counsel?
They all come, they start with like a sample policy from the New Hampshire School Board Association that the art policy committees amongst all the school boards then review, dig into, discuss, agree on, make sure that everything goes through legal to make sure they're clear.
And the School Board Association policy writers are attorneys.
Yeah.
And so to that point, yeah, we, we use the strictest language presented to the New Hampshire stat, you know, the statutes and it's the School Board Association. We want to make sure that we are in line with the, you know, both state and and federal laws. With Title IX, we, the story was, we, we updated to the 2024 version, the change in administration quickly decided, you know, made, made us react to updating back to the 2020 version. We did that. The policy committee dug in. We partnered with the School Board Association. We made sure we were in adherence with the laws. Dan Bay was very helpful in, in, in the policy committee at that, in that moment. So I feel good about the policies that are presented. And I, I support the waiving of the first read and getting into it. And so that's the process for this one. Title IX has been all over the place and and I'm, and I'm sure you follow life, right? Like it's moving around pretty quick, right? And so we're reacting to it and making sure we are where we need to be, both at the state and federal levels. And it's been, it's been a bit tricky, you know, so I appreciate the flexibility and the nimbleness of the policy committee and a couple of extra meetings here and there. And and so that's how we got here for this evening.
Yep, yep, wonderful. Thank you.
So any other discussion on the Title IX policies listed? None, we'll do a roll call.
Rover, yes.
Peter, yes.
Man, yes.
Friend, yes.
Chief, yes.
And Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And the other policies that are listed, D A F B I G E, I H A N, J L C J A, J L F, J L F have won. This will be considered a first read on them and we'll bring them back next meeting for the second read.
So.
Unless there's, if there's anything anyone has questions about in those policies, please let us know now or before the next meeting. Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is personnel. And we do have a resignation letter from Anthony Hots, he's a current chemistry teacher, so I would like to have a motion to accept the resignation with regret.
Motion to accept the letter of resignation with regret for Anthony Hots.
Okay, hot. So the second. Thank you, Mr. Gupta. And roll call votes.
Lover, yes.
Peter, yes.
Manning, yes.
Friend, yes.
Chief, yes.
And Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Thank you. And.
So there's a second part to the personnel. We're gonna have to come back to this, but you know, at the end of as if we get through the agenda, we'd like to go into non-public to discuss the teacher nominations for the 25, 26 years. And I just want to put that on hold and we'll come back and hopefully we want to improve the slate of nominations. We come out of non-public later this evening.
Okay. We'll be back to that. Adopting the CTE regional agreement. So this is something that's new that we've not seen before. But do you want to speak to reasoning?
Happy to. So years ago, the, the New Hampshire state was dividing the regions for CTE. And I can't remember exactly when, but prior to COVID, the region, you know, they did some reorg and at the regional agreements, they used to be 20-year agreements, kind of, you know, went away. There's been some reorganization and now you're not in, in the regions in the same format. You sign agreements with centers. And so for, we've grown in, in in the last four years, in, in 2021, we had seven CTE students that primarily went to Nashville. We did not provide transportation to Nashville or Milford as far as like a van or a bus. We reimbursed for travel. We've had a growth, substantial growth this year. It's, it's between 45 and 50, depending on the semester. So kids are taking advantage of both. So our, you know, we are in agreement, you know, with, we have tonight, what I'm hoping you guys will vote on is to have chess, Stephanie sign sign both agreements with Nashville and Milford. So we will continue to partner with those CT centers and send students there. This is a bit time sensitive. The state is looking for these back 323, 324. That window, I can't remember exactly. I got an email from both Milford and Nashville today looking for agreement signs. And we're excited to partner with, with both Nashville and Milford with CTE students. I, I think our kids will benefit. We will certainly have more kids attending Nashville than Milford, but Milford is close and more convenient for first bridge students as well. So and because of the, the smallness of the centers, no more comfortable. So we have to get there too. So I'll always get a motion to allow Stephanie to sign.
Yeah, to authorize the chair to sign on to this.
Signing discussion.
So we're just, we're.
Yes.
So we're just, we're just re-upping this thing, right?
Formalizing.
Formalizing.
Yeah, sorry, vernacular.
Yeah.
Okay, we're formalizing that. All right, great. And then why, why don't kids? Why are more kids going to Nashville versus Milford? What does Nashville have?
The center is newer. As a, it has, a few more programs. It has the, actually a few more programs. Like a significant amount of programs. And so that's where most of our kids go because of the building, the newness, the program. And it seems to be a preferred place to, to get CTE education.
And when, when you say Nashville, they consider CTE is right, one program. So it's 20 programs?
Yeah.
Okay. That's and where Milford has five, six, seven.
I know that one, Hudson too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Which our students can and Albert, yes, still.
If there's something that probably would not fall under, fall in Nashville, because right now we're running the vans, it's a lot easier for us to also coordinate with one school. But if there's a program that's not, I'm sure.
Yeah, so John, to your point, like we've aligned our calendars with Nashville and Milford. We've aligned our schedules with those schools. We didn't align our schedules necessarily with Hudson and and their CT center. It's a, it has different types of programming. But it also, and we don't have as many number of kids interested in that. But with that said, school counselors from each building would not deny kids an opportunity to, to take part in that. And and it's very personalized. So, but we just don't have the numbers to formally have an agreement.
And, and it's a good point to align then to, to the school calendars as a requirement now. And if you're starting to do three programs, three schools along versus to it, it starts to get.
Yeah. It's guaranteed seats versus options. We have guaranteed seats and these two, and then we have optional seats.
Okay.
Raj, just his hand up.
Yes.
Hi Raj.
Hi, sorry, just, I am trying to, I don't, I don't really have any concerns about the agreements, but I was curious about reading them. But it says in assembly that I don't have permissions, even though I'm logged in. Is, should I, is that correct? Like, are, just should I just let this go or can it's something that I could read at some other point?
We will make sure you have permission. That's strange. I, I, we thought that was set up with your email, you know. So we'll work on it.
Always for the new.
So.
Can you open it? Kristen, okay. You can't, huh?
I can open the one.
Okay.
Raj, to your point, we'll make sure you're gonna see them and have that, and we can answer further questions later if they come up.
Yeah, I'm not, not concerned. I think it's, it's just fantastic to hear that growth and that there's this, all these different options for kids. So thanks, thanks for making sure that happens.
Yeah. All right, so.
I mean, I guess my question is, right, to step away, you covered this, but these were, like, uh, let me say negotiated in good faith. We got, we gotta say our piece.
Yeah, I sat down.
Discussion about what.
Yeah, so a couple of different levels. Tim and Dana did, did quite a bit of the work between the schools themselves and then the superintendents met less than three weeks ago and, and, and walked through the agreements at Nashville. And, and so I'm comfortable with what's in there. And it's, it's, you know, Steve mentioned it's guaranteed seats. You know, sometimes we don't use all our seats, but we are guaranteed seats and, and so so I'm comfortable with this.
So, motion.
Yeah, motion to allow the chair to, or authorize the chair to adopt the CTE regional agreements with Nashville and Milford.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Glover.
Lover, yes.
Okay, that's all right. There's no other discussion. Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
Peter, yes.
Manning, yes.
Friend, yes.
Chief, yes.
Mr. Gupta?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Superintendent updates.
Yes. We have a, another meeting in, in, in a couple of weeks, so the update was to pretend it might be a little more extensive at, at that point. But we just have three quick ones this evening. Just kind of bounce around here. Update on P P C policies. They are posted, Stephanie, on, on the website. I know we were, I didn't have them two weeks ago, but they are there, so people can go see those. Update graduation requirement policy. We have been, you know, working on that. We had a meeting yesterday. We're gonna see the work on that and just kind of align those a bit more. And then hockey, we've been, you know, updating people for the last couple of months on hockey, where we're at as of now. We have not been able to find a cooperative team for a men's hockey program. We were with North. North has decided to, you know, partner with South. And they have a cooperative between their two schools and Kelly Brayley worked, you know, on a few options. We have a handful of students who this affects. I can assure you, based on conversation, myself, Steve, Dana, Kelly Brayley. We've reached out to those families and Kelly's working with them to make sure that they're aware of the situation and what options they have. We're talking three, right, three students.
One of them, one of them is injured.
So we're, we're, it's unfortunate, but it is a reality of the situation.
Where did the negotiations fall apart with the last one that we agreed to last week? Maybe can we show this? Oh, okay, so they refused.
Yes.
They declined.
They declined. So, so that is where we're at. That, that is what I have superintendent faces for tonight. And, and so I appreciate, I'll take any questions if you'd like to.
Just a, a comment or a recognition, that meeting we had yesterday, graduation requirements, I thought was extremely valuable. It was brought the administration thinking to the board and the policy thinking. Those are two different points of view trying to achieve a common objective. And minds in the room actually got a lot of work done. And I really appreciate the time and space. And that's the kind of synergy that I believe we can, let, use that example and try to replicate it as we can make decisions, as we solve our, our problems or tackle our challenges. That was, that was beautiful and I would appreciate, thank you staff, you yourself for making that happen.
Welcome. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Thank you for those updates. So we're on to do public input. We have nobody in the room. Is there anybody online?
Just one person.
If they're interested in speaking, please raise your hand.
I don't see a hand out.
It's good.
Okay, so we'll close the public input and I will need a motion to go into non-public under thirty-one, A, three. Thirty-one, A, three, two, C.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Stephanie?
Let me do that. There's one more thing that I need to hear.
Yes.
He's appoint our clerk to treasurer.
Hey. I've not spoken to that.
Spoke with our clerk. She's absolutely willing to do it.
Okay, I'm right now going to make an assumption that CJ and we will. I triple check my. CJ, thank you for catching that. I really appreciate it.
I make a motion to appoint CJ Butler as our treasurer and Doc Kuzma as our district clerk.
I'm second.
Second.
So I say thank you very much for stepping up and thank you for catching that. We'll have to do a roll call on that one.
Whoever, yes.
Manning, yes.
Yes.
Chief, yes.
And Mr. Gupta?
Yeah. Quick question before we go into non-public.
Yes.
Do we still, do we still go around and figure out what people want and the agenda for the next month in board members or not?
We have not.
We don't have to.
No, but there's, there's things that I know I spoke with Mr. Glover about assumption. What I think I'd like to do is even be able to have a chance to sit down with everybody before, I'll forget before the next year, because it's coming up quick. But talk about what they'd like to accomplish and think about the next year and see who can lay a few things out ahead of time and then debbie by the process for that. Everyone's good with that? I reach out to everybody?
I think that's a perfect item for the next agenda, actually, because when we take a look at what board goals are and what we accomplished from our board goals last year, I'll be honest with you, they really didn't do much last year. So the last twelve months, this board accomplished.
We, we were doing, yeah.
They talked a lot.
Talked a lot.
What, 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 if, if that's what you want to handle, I'm fine with it. One, one suggestion we may have is one, the two previous boards, we've been, before we had non-public or ended the meeting, we go around to each board member and say, these are some of the important things we might want to think about adding to the agenda. That way, that way is public. Where you can see it, report it, and then you can take that back in your meeting with the superintendent. Figure out what you want to put on the agenda. You know, with each board member has had a chance to have input. Because it's difficult to provide input.
I'd be.
When we're not in a public meeting.
I'd be interested in a follow-up to your comment just now. I'm not working this body and I don't care. In comparing our board goals and what do you think we might have accomplished more? Or whether we met our responsibilities and obligations here? But, but not right now. Yeah, that's gonna be when we talk about what we want to accomplish our goals. But I want, but I would like to hear follow-up on that comment.
Yeah, this board didn't discuss solar once last year. It's one of our goals. So there's a lot on there that we didn't even talk.
I think, I think that to your point, before we make new goals, we should look at the. Yeah.
Yeah, we discussed everything.
Yes. So would you, would you imagine? Wasn't coming here assuming I was being chair, so I didn't assume how we were going to do this, but still could give me for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And so we do the April meeting, we'll come up with the right plan.
Yeah, it's just a question.
No, it's not a bad suggestion. Make sure, it's her.
We're having non-public hour.
No.
Yeah, we still, we still will go there.
We're right, yeah. We, yeah. Did we adjourn? No, we have not, you were so close. We, we had a motion to, to go on a public.
Yes, that wasn't second.
Yeah.
Second.
So now it's seconded. Roll call, Mr. Glover.
Whoever, yes.
Peter, yes.
Manning, yes.
Friend, yes.
Chief, yes.
Yes.
Alright, so Raj, hold on, we'll make sure.